Work for what you got. I've seen them kids work day.
Maybe. Maybe that one.
We have no inspector school on the town. And fifteen people show up. We'll get through it together in a small week. Martin from Murray area is coming down. Oh, yeah. They're right down there.
That's right. Ready for my friend. Lean.
You know that's. Aren't hills. That's bad guy. They want to get it on time because they really happy to get classroom.
There's new appreciation for you. Teachers all around this summer.
Yeah.
We got cameras real quick. They got out. Bottom wall. Nearly six months.
Yeah. Ready to hatch it since jam some of the morning. Hatch it since jam.
I think so.
Okay, so tell the mayor. Good, Mary, you think he got it?
Yeah, I think so.
You good one.
Yeah, I think that here's the odd delivery.
It's trying to do.
But everybody's bored, but I can make it work.
No, they don't be there.
Daddy's walking around. Time because he had a knee surgery.
Yeah. Good.
You got your wake though.
Good, I've been real busy.
Oh, that's nice.
See this? That's the we go by.
Well, the lines. They turned a lot of the pages.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, I have got seven o'clock and this time I'd like to order so everyone is standing up, hopefully prayer is ready. Father, heaven, we do thank you so much, Lord, for a beautiful day to give us your joy today. Thank you, Lord, for all the blessings that you've given us. You're very good to us, better than what you serve us, we're very, very grateful. Lord, we pray for all the business that we take care of. Pray, Lord, that you give us wisdom, make good decisions that would impact our positive life, citizens of law. Lord, we're careful to pray for those that are serving, military, law enforcement, first responders, those that get into the time of doubt, that we can be excited and secure. I pray to bless them and keep them safe. Lord, it is pride, everything that we do is very honored, Lord, God, which you give them your praise. Amen. Congratulations to your life, coming here in six years. You're a rep, what you say is. Well, I'm ready to. You're the best. Thank you, thank you. This time I just write it as a roll call.
Yes. Here, here, anymore?
Here.
Are the other ones here? I did that.
Here. Um, the next thing on the agenda is the first little extended agenda. But prior to doing that, I want to make some presentations that you will listen to that. So this time I'd like to have come forward Nathan Langley and Allison Langley. Well, thank you for being here tonight and I do want to give a representation to Allison Langley for what is the Mulberry Community presentation. Allison told me that she will have to have a little time off here, so she's going to be out of pockets for a while, you don't know when or what, but God takes a toll of that. Anyway, Nathan Langley is the president of the board for the community presentation. So we want to give Allison's recognition to us. The word is excellent. This award is presented to Allison Langley without any achievements, with different times and interviews, good energy, effort, service, and community, highly appreciated. Given the safety of August, twenty twenty, next time, Nathan Langley, President of the Lower East Coast Board, and Nathan Langley, President of the Board. So, Nathan, if you have a project to see early, we need somebody to take photo for it. And right here, your photo for. What he was saying. I wanted to say thank you from the bottom of our heart for your service, your love, your dedication and devotion. You have a tremendous blessing, good papers, to the city of Mulberry, and we're going to miss you tremendously. God bless you and we love you. Thanks. Let's give her another. Welcome, I'd like to recognize two of our city employees tonight and Mr. Jim Junior, would you come aboard? I was at the council, we know that Mr. Junior, our public director, and completed training and presentation with OHS, that we now, if OHS was to show up, we've got the radials and it's a protection city, keeps the city, makes sure that there's everything that OHS is required. So we just want to recognize Jim after that and you can have thought of him, Jim, yeah. Yeah. Next, I'd like for Alex, welcome to come up. Alex has been with us and Alex is qualified in so many different areas. Alex is doing, right, these are straight super good. And also, we have any of our equipment, we can operate all of our heavy equipment, we brought home there and we have a water line break, sewer problem, we're in there and wanted to recognize Alex and you might notice that the city truck is parked out over here on Main Street, at the corner of Main and Holman. Alex has bought that house, he lived there, so he drives the city truck parked there and we really appreciate it, he's ready to go in moments, so Alex, thank you so much and we appreciate it. Let's go. Thank you, thank you. Darren, come on up, Darren Fields. We want to recognize Darren. Darren works at our water treatment plant and he also is qualified to work any of our heavy equipment tonight and operates that, he does that very successfully, but he just completed his wastewater two license, so he is licensed now in our wastewater treatment plant as well as in our water treatment plant. So we really believe in training and we really appreciate our guys who are already in the training, we want to recognize Darren Fields and wastewater. Say, Ken, Ken Ross, Ken Ross. Come on up, Ken. Yes, he's sitting up all the way down. Darren is just great, he's got a record for all our citizens and Darren, now he just completed his license for a fully inspector, so he can go out and inspect the water now, so we're really grateful for all the things that Ken does and if you'll see him, oh, anyway, thank you so much, Darren, and very much appreciate it. Let's go. All right, thank you so much, thank you. I think that all of the city employees, I have to. I guess anyone, Jim?
Sir?
I miss anyone, I get everybody to come.
I think, I think you did good, missed Tom back here.
That's right, I do, I do want to recognize the Mulberry Community, great thanks to the board of directors. And so, with you board members, please stand up, all the board members of the Mulberry City Community. We are Nathan Langley, Tom Smith, Attorney Attorney, is all here, is there any others? I'm forty fifth. Thank y'all so much for all y'all do, recognition, thank you. Now we move into our, pretty much our consent agenda. The minutes were, you fell, to each of you, you'll have a chance to go over those, finish reports and so, council, are there any additions, corrections, or changes that need to be made to any of those reports that you received?
Motion's been approved.
Motion's been made.
Second.
And seconded to approve the consent agenda, are there any other discussions? If not?
Wilma?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Shima?
Yes.
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Stacy?
Yes.
Next, we'll go into our departmental reports, the first report is our public works. Junior, would you come and call him and report for public works?
Good evening, your lady, Councilor Mayor. We've had some pretty good nights, we get a lot of things taken care of, if you know that's rain, we're trying to get everything caught out. Last month, we requested that we give a pitch open on that, down the street, that's three quarters back right now, you know, and we tried to stay at our requirements doing well. Most of the calls that we've had all month are pretty standard, we haven't had any, sure any, whatever, anything going happen either. And if there are any questions? As I say, I'm proud of this group that works with me, I'm here and mayor for those, all these boys that worked hard to get their licenses and they don't come easy, but that hang on you. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Junior. Next, we have our police report from Chief Shannon Murphy, Chief Murphy.
Good afternoon, I'm ready for something to be open. We're ready to say after that. July was extremely busy month, I don't know people optimize July or whatever. We had two hundred and forty-eight cars, fifty-two traffic stops, forty-seven citations, ten being criminal traffic, seven being being a parking at the nearest cars. Had twelve arrests, six misdemeanors, six felony, and one hundred and thirty-five felony checks. So if y'all have any questions? We're trying to figure out how or if we're going to get the food shop to the top this year, kind of depends on this and, you know, we can't take a hundred and thirty kids into one world plenty of times, so we're going to have some logistical issues, so I'm not sure how we're going to do this, so if anybody's got any ideas, I should take this point. Along with the fundraising, because, you know, we can't do the most, folks, the fundraising we've done in the past, so if anybody's got any ideas, get with me, I can take any idea we can have. Thank y'all.
Thanks, Chief. Next, one little word is fire department. Do we have, I didn't see Chief, what? I do have their report in my hands. The fire department responded to six fires during the month. They responded for rescue, emergency medical services to twenty-three, and then they had one hazardous condition that was built by, thirty total responses that month for the fire department. God, any questions for the fire departments that you would have addressed? All right, thank you. Next, we'll go into old business and you'll see there was none hired, or did have one old business that they didn't get on there, and that's Silver Bridge. You know, we talked about Silver Bridge throughout that, so I've been approached by Aaron Claus, who wanted to come to council for that and talk about Silver Bridge. Aaron? Come and call him and address the council.
Thanks, Mayor. We were just wanting to visit with the city and we provided the mayor with some info on supplementary costs that we've looked at, like as far as what it may cost the city to deal with Silver Bridge as far as not just taking it, because I know that it's state important with as far as delivering the bridge position, costs related to actually installing a bridge of that size. The three hundred foot spanning bridge, broken up into two, into three hundred foot spans. I ran some estimates for the mayor, provided that last time, I didn't have to take what that stayed with the mayor. Just looking at the foundations, what you would have to do to build a foundation to support a three hundred foot spanning bridge, what would have to be done to the deck, what it would take to actually install that bridge, and then I didn't really even look at any kind of maintenance stuff too. There is some info that we had put together, the group that's kind of slowly forming and trying to create a vision for what could have to done with it in the location around Silver Bridge, and so we provided this info to Franklin County at their form court meeting and we asked the mayor if we could kind of present that same stuff, so we just printed these out and going kind of.
Didn't give me the good script.
There's just three, I didn't know how many we needed to print out. And that's, Mayor, that's some of the same stuff I've already said, same all again. But mainly just to condense the time, because I know y'all are busy, you got a lot of important things, and then the bridge situation to deal with, but just three questions we wanted to ask, you know, the county's board members was, you know, is there an iconic value to in a silver bridge? And I think if you look at just the surrounding area, there's definitely some iconic values. In fact, I come up my aunt today and she gave me the, if you have a deuce out, you have to get a copy of that, something to go and get those, you have some great articles and stuff in it. You know, on the front cover is War Eagle Bridge and War Eagle now. And the thing I noted on the photo was the hypotension on War Eagle Bridge is ten foot six and the hypotension on our Silver Bridge is twelve feet. We actually have a bigger clearance, bridge structure here than they do at War Eagle. But there's some iconic value to that bridge, right, because that draws people in to that location. We visit with Franklin County, you know, just in Franklin County, you have the trust bridge that turned it in, there's some iconic value to that, people go to that area, they spend time there, they have photos in that area with that bridge. And then also in the, in City of Ozark, the bridge called the Arkansas River, they use that on their marketing for the City of Ozark all the time, and it's a great marketing piece for the City of Ozark. So there is a value to an iconic bridge structure. Is there a financial value to where a bridge is located at? And for access points on the Mulberry River? And so in that is a map and y'all are from here, so you know this better than I do. You know, when you look at access points on the Mulberry River, they're all in the north, and you can go and, I was picking the mayor's brain because he knows him better than I do, probably has more access to it, but you know, if you think about the truck stop that's at twenty-three highway going out, and if any of y'all go there during the week, during the slow time, if you go there on a Friday or Saturday or Sunday, there's Texas tag, Oklahoma tags, I mean, that place is full all the time. And it's the draw to all of that recreational access points on the north part of the river. And so our question was, what would then happen if we had an access point? I know we have Bluff Hall, but part of our group is a couple of avid kayakers and canoeers that have flooded this Mulberry River, they have tired a lot, but they've also traveled and floated rivers in other places. And you can see the value of having, you know, having an access point tied to your city on a part of the river that people want to be on, right? So Silver Bridge, that location is the last drop-off point really for enthusiasts that want to come and float the movie. They want to get out there because the stretch from Silver Bridge to Bluff Hall is not a desirable floating section of the river. But when you look at the map, you see all of the access points in the north, what would an access point for the city of Mulberry then, if we had one right there connected to the city? The right of way, the mayor was telling me the right of way already goes out almost to that point already, even the state right of way goes down. Actually, when I left our meeting there, I went down and I took a photo, just trying to figure out where Crawford County's right of way starts. And there's a section right before you get to the, what's called the old shelf pit there, but there's a section of the roadway, you can tell where the state's maintenance and right of way stops, and then from that point to the edge of the bridge, so it's only probably thirty to forty feet. But we just wanted to ask the question, we think there's a huge value to Mulberry and this part of the Mulberry River and why, what would happen to our area if we had that as an access? And then just the safety, I had a ton of photos I've taken and then there's in the picture you can kind of see, but you don't have to, you don't have to travel too many times across Silver Bridge, we were coming over here tonight and I seen a couple of there's three trucks parked down there and they're going fishing and some people are down there swimming and we're pulling up and stopping and other trucks, vehicles coming across the bridge. And that's all happening fine and it's fairly safe right now, but it's five miles an hour. Now, a two-lane road, as far as what the space plan is to go in there and the curve and the state bridge in here has already told us and talked to me that, you know, they're upping the speed in that, they're taking some return problems out of that access point. So they're going to thirty-five mile an hour speed limit, through the curve over the bridge, longer than they should deal, so at thirty-five miles an hour, safety is going to be an issue because there's still going to be people that want to stop and try to use and try to access that point of Mulberry. And so that was our question was, you know, is there an iconic value? Is there a financial value for where it's located at? And is there some safety that will, if it's improved, could certainly enhance and certainly affect people that want to come and be in our city, be in Mulberry and experience that part? That's what I wanted to share.
Thank you so much, Senator, I really appreciate you kind of sharing with the council a lot of times of the, of the team, the working, the, the, the average part of the, the, the director, the council, the, the, thank you so very much.
Please want to share a different vision for what's to be done?
Thank you. Next, we're going to do new business. We have first of all ordinance twenty twenty oh three, an ordinance to approve the variance to the zoning map, zoning ordinance one forty-two. My head and emergency could be here, so you have to bear with me on these. This is an ordinance, it's so, I have to, have to break up the reading. This is ordinance number twenty twenty dash oh three, an ordinance to approve the variance to the zoning map, zoning ordinance number one forty-two. Whereas the Mulberry Planning Commission has approved the variance to zoning ordinance number one forty-two, whereas the Mulberry City Council also approves this variance, now therefore being ordained by the city council of the city of Mulberry, Arkansas, section one, the variance to ordinance number one forty-two is granted, allowing the real property described laws to be rezoned from residential one to residential four, two, ten, west, section two, and all ordinances or parts of ordinances in conflict therewith are hereby repealed. There's ordinance twenty twenty oh three. Motion to approve that? Number two, she there?
Yeah.
Louis, there's a spin reading rules and big ordinance twenty twenty dash oh three by Todd Longy. Wait for the second.
A second. Wilma?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Shima?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, Stacy? Yes.
Orders number twenty twenty dash oh three, an ordinance to approve the variance to the zoning map, zoning ordinance number one forty-two. Motion to deny the brand, the second, or any discussion? We all know the topic.
So it's the empty lot, right?
That's right.
And it's, it's, it's one that's behind your apartment, you know? And that's changing ordinance for the residential to a trade?
Yes, so. And that comes from recognition from the, uh, planning zoning commission.
And it's common saying that, like, you call that?
Yes. There's more, don't make, my zoning commission, they can address you.
But after all that?
What?
What's that?
Yes.
Any other questions or discussions?
Not.
Well, Matt?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Yeah, yes, okay, yes.
Next on agenda is resolution twenty-twenty-dash-oh-eight. This is the City of Mulberry, Arkansas, resolution number twenty-twenty-dash-oh-eight. A resolution commending previously numbered resolutions in order to correct a numbering error. Whereas two resolutions from twenty-twenty have the same resolution numbers, now therefore am resolved and enacted by the City Council of Mulberry, Arkansas. Section one, resolution number twenty-twenty-dash-oh-five, entitled, "The Resolution Appending Adjustments to the Budget for the City of Mulberry, Arkansas for the year twenty-twenty" is here at, hereby, hereby renumbered as resolution number twenty-twenty-dash-oh-seven. Section two. Any resolution in conflict therewith is hereby repealed. Section three. In the event that any portion of this resolution shall be held invalid, unenforceable, or illegal by a court incompetent judicial, then the remaining portions shall remain sole force of effect. The motion to adjourn, stand motion.
I make a motion to adjourn for the first reason.
The motion to adjourn, made, in segment, and a resolution number twenty-twenty-dash-oh-eight here for any discussion.
Well, Matt?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Thank you. Yeah, yes, Jimmy?
Yes.
Next, uh, on the agenda is, uh, local's, uh, vehicle sales rotation. As you know, uh, we, uh, are trying to rotate, uh, vehicles, the work that we did nineteen quarters, ten our vehicles, and at this time, you know, we delighted one vehicle because it was so low mileage. Now we have, uh, three vehicles that are ready to, uh, to rotate, and, uh, we have, did y'all get all that in the package?
Yes.
Yes, and Mike is gonna go out and look at what, uh, the, uh, vehicle bid price is for a new vehicle, a state vehicle, and then the value of, uh, current vehicles that we have. And so what, um, we'd like to do is get the council's approval to, uh, sell vehicles to, um, us order the vehicle, not, not order one until we.
Actually, I actually haven't sold them.
Right. Sell them at these, uh, prices that they've got. So, uh, that, uh, is, uh, I think, uh, we are, and have some interest in, uh, one of the vehicles, and so we feel like that, uh, they're, we thought it was that, uh, this is the best time of the year to sell those. Fact, uh, that, uh, several places say they're looking for new vehicles right now, hard times, new vehicles over there, so now's the good time, uh, to go ahead and advertise those for those trucks to call sale, and, uh, then, uh, get, uh, get the trucks over order after so.
Probably going to try to go back to the three-quarter ton truck?
Yes.
Any real purpose in having that three-quarter ton truck?
Yes, yes, because of full truck trailer that, uh, involves that heavy truck.
Remember, that's more than one three-quarter ton?
No, remember, it's a one, a one three-quarter ton, and, uh, you know, if we sold the one ton, the only tons, so we need not have truck, you know, the three-quarter ton is hidden next to, actually full as, uh, dump trailer.
Right.
We want the dump trailer for exchange. So that's, uh, what we're asking the council for proof.
So we're actually looking at getting rid of three trucks?
Yes. That'll span, you know, the, 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 well, uh.
What's the, we look at accident area, what we could place in it?
Uh.
We can actually get what we're estimating on these things, we'll be all right.
Yeah. Yes. Mike, there's more, in that, materials your own vehicles, I think, like, what you're saying.
How long do we have to secure this price, which you have a set time?
Um, I really don't, you know, I can't, sorry, I can't, I can't. If you make a motion.
I make a motion, we, we, we need, uh, authority to, to shut that for sale, so that we can purchase the truck.
Motion to make a statement, that we go forward with, uh, selling vehicles to be able to order, uh, replacements after so, and, uh, we'll, 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 there any discussion?
Well, Matt?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Jimmy?
Yes.
Him?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Next, uh, on the agenda is, uh, they'll receive, uh, in a letter, a letter from Cars, our, uh, sanitation contractor, and, uh, they are going to increase the price that we're, we're charged, and so, uh, we wanted you to make sure you had that, and, uh, were aware, that, uh, effective first of September. Right now, what, uh, I mean, we'd like to do, we'd like to, uh, go ahead and bring back to the council a proposal, uh, next council meeting, uh, in September, uh, because we're not really prepared to, uh, make a proposal, we, we're waiting to our customers right now, with this little bit of late change, uh, to see, but we're gonna evaluate that, and, um, we'd like to, uh, make sure that the council is, uh, aware of this, we've known that, uh, next month, we're gonna be extending to you a, a proposal of, uh, what we need to do as far as our sanitation charges to customers.
With our contract on that, next month, September?
Uh, no, the contract is still good for two more years, however, in the timing contract, they have the option of, uh, raising those rates, uh, based upon, uh, their cost of, uh, landfills and fuel, things like that. So it is in contract, they are authorized to do this, so it's something that we cannot prevent, something that we, uh.
I notice they're gonna offer us some trash cans, and this proposal, is that a?
Right, and that's one of the things we want, uh, discuss, uh, with you, uh, next, uh, month, because, uh, you know, uh, one of the trash, one trash can will not hold six bags, in order people to put out six bags right now, so it would actually reduce the, uh, of, uh, trash in person, if you actually, without, unless they're individuals on their own purchase, and additional.
So we'll, we'll be required to use their trash cans along with, if we use?
Well, we're, we're not required to have cans at all.
Okay.
No, that's, we will not be required, that is something that they will suggest, but it's not a requirement.
It says you can use bags. It says right here you can use your bags, continue using your bags.
But I just, you can use both.
Right, what they're, what they're willing to, uh, avoid with discussions is, uh, make sure they have a truck that would just have one person, one person. Well, one person, just the one person, lay that down there, um.
About all we got now, really?
Well, then that's real, yeah, the Ozark route.
Yeah.
Right, and check, like, do they, do they offer recycling, too? It says they're recycling.
They do have a recycling plant, yes.
Is there something you can adopt now, since we're not doing the recycling, we serve side of the Mulberry?
We are, we're doing the recycling.
Not per se.
Right. And these are things that, uh, that's why we wanted to, uh, get better information, uh, to bring back to the council on, uh, next month, that we wanna make sure that you're aware that the cost is gonna go up first September, that, uh, there'll be no change, uh, until we finish September, then we'll, 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 we'll propose a proposal for entry course. Okay? So, this, uh, not, does not require any action, but it's, uh, for, uh, this information. Next, um, on there we had, we added in a resolution twenty-twenty-oh-nine, and I'll read this resolution. You do not have to, this is, resolution number twenty-twenty-oh-nine, a resolution condemning the house located at two two-one west third street, Mulberry, Arkansas. Whereas Mulberry City ordinance number seventy-nine-dash-six allows for a condemnation property located within the city limits that has become dilapidated, unsafe, and nuisance of that, or that constitutes a fire hazard to the, and has become detrimental to public welfare, and whereas there has been no progress made for repairs or demolitions of the, of the mentioned property, now therefore be resolved by the City Council of the City of Mulberry, Arkansas. Section one, that the City of Mulberry, Arkansas hereby declares the proposed described property to be in nuisance and has become detrimental to public welfare and dangerous safety. Ordering that the structure be removed, people wise, according to seventy-nine-dash-six. Section two, the script of the property is as follows. Script of the property, two two-one west third street, Mulberry, Arkansas, seventy-nine four seven, downing property ID number three six zero nine eight. Nangle, Bummer, Clefton, Gilbert, Field Box, six five one, Mulberry, Arkansas, seventy-nine four seven. Vision for condemnation, structure currently appears to be unsound and unfit for occupancy and has become nuisance. Section three, due to the continued nature of the danger caused by the condition of the property described above, emergencies declared exist, and this resolution shall technical force impact immediately on its passage and in the blocks, but the time limit set out to a forty, seventy-nine dash six. This is, uh, resolution, and, uh, if, if you know the house on third street.
See two houses up there, and I'm not sure which one, maybe it's the side or side.
Grass, it's, yeah, all the way, all around, it's here.
Right, right there. He's on the north side of the road, right?
Some south side, some, some south side.
On west third, on the south side.
And south side, west third. Next door to me, Bobby, don't.
Next door.
Okay, yeah, all right, yeah, I know what that.
Go on, Chief, break it, break it.
The yellow, yellow wood prime house, and on the south side, just behind the mid-four question park, I say no park, that's, 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 we probably have a little less than ten, ten quarters, and, and every neighbor has complained in his life, remember thousands about trash, about, just the, the general looks and the, the smell, the, the way they're handling the space.
Is that not the one I mentioned, the, the? That's the one, yeah, so it's been a while since someone's lived there?
It's been probably, well, it's been.
The daughter's.
There's nothing, uh, water, uh, clean water at the house, or, 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 or. Okay, do we have a motion on this resolution?
I make motion.
Was there any other discussion?
Well, Matt?
Yes.
Bobby?
Yes.
Sheila?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, yes.
Since, uh, this has an emergency clause, I think we need to have a separate clause for the emergency clause.